Call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, August 18th, 2022. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Crowell, please call the roll.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I'm here.
Commissioner Heikala.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Schmoki.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
And Chair Schwartz.
Here.
Our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I move that we adopt the agenda for today, Thursday, August 18th.
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Heikala. Any corrections, additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of our July 21st meeting.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Schmoki.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 21st, 2022 meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Schmoki, second by Casey. Any further discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the minutes are approved. First order of business this evening is planning case 22-16, a home occupation permit for engraving business at 13277 Avoset Street, Justin McGee. Mr. Crowell.
All right. Yeah, good evening, everyone. So, we have planning case 22-16. The applicant is requesting approval of a home occupation permit for an engraving business. So, the location where the home occupation would occur is on the corner of 133th Ave. And Avoset, in our LDR2, Low Density Residential 2 district. To the north is the Anoka County Sheriff's Office and out of the city of Coon Rapids, city limits. And then, kind of south and west of the site are low-density housing, and part of it is in a planned unit development. And then, to the east is the Anoka County Bunker Hills compost site, just to give some bearings. So, the applicant would like to operate a laser engraving business out of a portion of their garage. The business would provide laser cutting, engraving, and marking services on a variety of materials. And the business could create customized gifts, personal decor, business signs. Most of the orders are shipped out when they are completed, but the applicant will have a few customers coming either to drop off items or picking them up when they are complete. And in that case, the customer would park in the driveway of the residence and walk to the garage for pickup. Hours of operation would be 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And then, the equipment and then the storage of some of the materials for the business occupy about 150 square feet of the garage, which is shaded there in red. Looking at our standards of approval for a home occupation permit, staff felt that it met our standards. I think maybe just a couple that I'll note is that if a home occupation is carried out in the garage, that the minimum amount of required garage space should be maintained for vehicle storage. And in this case, our code would require a minimum 484 square feet of vehicle storage. And given the size of their garage and the size of the home occupation, they have about 895 square feet left for vehicle and personal storage. Other pieces to note again is that our home occupations are limited between 9:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. and shouldn't exceed 30 hours per week. And in this case, the hours that they're indicating are at that 30. And then, again, watching that our home occupations don't occupy more than 400 square feet. And as I mentioned earlier, this takes up about 150 square feet, so under that maximum. So, I think with that, staff was recommending approval for the home occupation permit here, again, with kind of some of our standard conditions, just trying to reiterate some of those important pieces on a home occupation permit around vehicles, parking, signage, hours of operation, and the amount of space that the home occupation can occupy. So, if you have any questions, please let me know. And I know we have the applicant in the audience as well to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Crowell? Hearing none. Is there anything the petitioner would like to add? No? All right. We do need a public hearing on this matter, so at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 22-16 for a home occupation permit for an engraving business at 13277 Avoset Street. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak to the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and limit comments to the commission. Commissioner, your thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmoki.
I don't have any questions for the applicant or the commission. I think I can make a motion.
All right.
So, in planning case 22-16, I'll make a motion to approve the home occupation permit with the conditions as cited.
Second.
Motion by Schmoki, second by Heikala. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to said counsel within 10 business days, if someone so chooses. Otherwise, good luck. Our next case this evening is planning case 22-17, the site plan for Sola Salons at 12 XXX Riverdale Boulevard, Little North Fork, 7 Riverdale LLC. Mr. Crowell.
All right. Yeah, so in planning case 22-17, the applicant is requesting site plan approval for a new 12,296-square-foot salon-studio business. So, again, here's just the location map for the site, kind of tucked away in Riverdale Village in between Schneiderman's Furniture and the Dick's Sporting Goods and Best Buy Building. There's a pedestrian plaza just to the kind of south of the site. It's in our regional shopping district, so the different standards in terms of design and some of the site improvements would align with our regional shopping zoning district. Just looking at the site plan, again, the applicant's proposing a new salon-studio business on an approximately 1-point acre site that is currently undeveloped. There is some slight modification to the existing curb on-site that you can kind of see along here, so just a slight modification, but it would still be accessed by private drives kind of surrounding the site through the Riverdale Village. In terms of our dimensional requirements, we staff felt that it met our minimum standards. There's a 16% building coverage. And in terms of our building and parking setbacks, we felt like this meets those minimum standards. There is, looks like, some mechanical equipment on-site that we would just want to require or watch for appropriate screening of equipment. You'll see there's a bike rack provided near the entrance of the building. And then, for pedestrian circulation, there is sidewalk around the entire building that is connected to that pedestrian plaza, kind of allowing for some additional pedestrian circulation and access through Riverdale Village to this site. There are two kind of curb ramps here for the ADA parking, and then also providing access for individuals that might be parking kind of on this east side of the site, have a curb ramp to be able to access the sidewalk and access the front door to the business with a small landscaping island here in the front and then kind of along the sides. As I mentioned, there was a modified circulation, just kind of pushing the curb back a little bit, and is still accessed via the private drives for the site. And then, all of our drives meet or exceed that 24-feet width for two-way traffic, providing adequate circulation on the site. Staff also felt that the proposal is kind of very similar in use and intensity to the surrounding commercial development and provides more than the minimum parking that's required. Looking at that requirement, it would be a minimum of 41 stalls, and here, they're proposing 79 parking stalls. So, we didn't feel that there would be any issues with access or causing overflow off-site. And then, maybe the final note I'll make on the site plan is this parking island is currently proposed to be striped. And talking with our city engineer and some other city staff, we felt comfortable leaving that paved versus providing curb just to allow enough access for trucks. There is a loading dock here on this building, and there might be some semi-truck traffic. And the engineer felt comfortable leaving this paved just to allow appropriate access and interning that might be needed for trucks kind of behind that building. Here's just a floor plan of the proposed building, kind of the business model. It's that an individual stylist would rent out or lease a salon space, so this is just kind of showing the layout of the different studios within this space. Looking at the elevations, there are a mix of materials of burgundy-colored brick, ivory-colored brick, custom masonry units, and aluminum windows. Looking here at the north elevation is your main entrance to the building, and this would be as if you're looking from US 10 or from Northdale Boulevard. And you'll see kind of parapets along the roof to kind of create different roof shapes. On the main entrance with the burgundy brick, kind of elevated out entryway, kind of creating a distinctive entry. And here, the east elevation would be from that kind of eastern parking lot or kind of from behind Dick's Sporting Goods, what you would see. And the proposed trash enclosure as well, that has the kind of three sides covered by, I think, the CMU units, and then the fourth side would be a gate per our standard. You'll see they are proposing some signage on the building, and those would be required to have separate signage permits through staff review. Here's the south and west elevation. So, this south elevation is what you would see from the pedestrian plaza. So, if someone was kind of walking through there, the sidewalk kind of comes up to where this door is. And then, the west elevation here is from Schneiderman's Furniture. And they did provide some perspective drawings to give you a sense of kind of what the building would look like. So, this is just from the northeast view, again, kind of looking from Highway 10. You see the main entrance here, kind of this entry archway. And then, the building is kind of articulated on all four sides and has awnings and the parapet to create different roof shapes on all four sides of the building. This is showing that bike rack, and then this landscape island that you would see near the front entrance as well. And then, here's a perspective of the southwest view, so this is kind of from, again, from the pedestrian plaza and Riverdale Village more generally, seeing the material, mix of materials and building shapes throughout. This was the landscape plan that was submitted as part of the initial application, and as you'll see in the staff report, did not meet our minimum landscape standards. And so, I had made a note in our condition of approval, kind of the lack of landscaping, where we would require 11 overstory trees, 10 ornamental trees, five evergreen trees, and 257 shrubs. The applicant, after the agenda was already posted on the website, did provide a revised landscape plan that does meet our standard, and I have some copies here that I can distribute out to all of you now. Yeah, and the applicant has the material board too for viewing here. And so, looking at the revised landscape plan, here they are providing the minimum number of trees and shrubbery that we would require, and so, kind of meets that. And staff felt comfortable leaving that as an approval of condition. If the planning commission so chooses or would like to remove it, granted that they did provide now a landscape plan that meets our standard. So, I think with that, the staff were recommending approval for the site plan with the following conditions, that engineering comments be addressed, sustainability comments be considered, applicant enter into the site security agreement, the applicant maintaining reciprocal easement agreement to ensure access to the site, any ground mechanical equipment would be adequately screened, providing the landscaping needed, signage being subject to separate building permits, and that the applicant pay a park dedication fee in the amount of $6,000 prior to any building permits. So, I think that, if you have any questions for me, and then I believe our applicant is also in the audience and can answer questions about the site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Crowell at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmoki.
So, is there also plans for irrigation with the landscaping?
That is a good question. I know as part of our standard, we would really promote irrigation, and so, okay, it looks like we will.
Great, thank you.
But yeah, the applicant can probably speak to that a little bit, too.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Yeah, so, Mr. Crowell, that service door from the south facade, is that, that's not used by customers, is that right? Everybody's directed to that north entrance?
Yeah, that's correct. That's how I interpreted the plan, that it really is the main entrance up here in the corner, and there's the lobby and kind of check-in area.
Okay.
And that this door would be more kind of egress door for access for employees and customers.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner, how about?
I have a question for planner Crowell. Is this proposed building, if I'm incorrect or correct, please clarify, is this not the old Firestone Service Center attached to Schneiderman's?
I don't believe so. It's currently an undeveloped site. Yeah, it's kind of next to that pedestrian plaza that's there in between Schneiderman's and Dick's Sporting Goods, but nothing like attached to the building that I'm aware of.
Okay, so it is separate?
Yep.
It is a separate building, or it'll be created as a new building?
Yeah, that's correct. Yep. The proposed salon business here would be a separate building, not connected to any existing building at Riverdale Village.
And then, my second question is, how many business, what kind of business types and how many units are going to be in there?
Yeah, I would probably defer that question to the applicant. I didn't see it in the narrative. I'm kind of just running under an assumption that on the floor plan, a lot of these, each would be their own separate studio for a hairstylist, but that would be a question for the applicant.
Okay, that's it.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Crowell, just to clarify, so the parking space that's behind Dick's Sporting, is good there, the staff is saying that that'll just be striped, not curved. It'll just be flat and striped, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So, yeah, this kind of parking island here, these two kind of rows of stalls, that's all striped.
So, effectively, all the curb lines and all that just, won't be there. It'll just be the parking.
Yeah, they'll be the painted striping. Yeah, it's not actually curb there on those lines.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Crowell at this time? Is there anything the petitioner would like to add? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Michael Nysley with Dyed Style Design, Golden Valley, Minnesota. I just basically here to answer any questions you may have. Yes, they will be irrigated, all the plantings will be irrigated around the building and across the roadways. And that the door on the south side is for egress and to, for convenient access to the refuse enclosure that's in the southeast corner of the site there. With the main, the entrance being on that northeast corner. There's roughly, the plan is a conceptual plan for the interior, but there's about 46 hair studios in that, in this building. And then, yes, the parking in the north of Dick's Sporting Goods is currently not curbed and gutted. It was all striped out. We basically are striping it back roughly the way it is now, with the exception that the drive along the east side just runs right through. I believe there's trucks that periodically park there now, but we're hoping that we have lots of customers and little room for the trucks to park there, so. But other than that, if there's any other questions available.
I have a question on the parking. Looking at the site plan, it shows four handicap parking stalls. Looking at the landscape plan, it only shows two?
There will be four, as the site plan shows. The landscape plan, they used as a base for their drawing, an older, older design, and they never updated it, so. But the landscape areas are the same.
All right.
But there are, there will be four, as shown on the site plan.
And then, my next question is, looking at the parking that's behind Dick's Sporting You've got the southernmost bank, is there a curb then at the, would be the south end of that or not?
Nope. Nope. There's, there are no curbs, gutters, or anything in that entire area. It kind of looks like an island, but it's just striped out as it currently is.
The parking row then, the southmost row, they're basically entered from the south?
Yes. Yep.
Is there anything that prevent them from continuing north?
You mean like a stop or something like that?
Yes.
No, there is not.
So, somebody that parked in, say, the, looks like stall number 40, would be able to continue pulling forward and go right out to the?
If nobody's in front of them, that could happen, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. We expect that if there's nobody parking in those areas, the trucks would be able to access around Dick's, using that existing drive around there and swing into those spaces and so forth as they may need for maneuvering. But, but yeah, that's, they're accessed off of that shared drive right now.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Could you explain us a little bit about your thought and approach here for having the building effectively oriented in reverse relative to all the rest of Riverdale?
Yeah. Well, the visibility is best off of that, from the surrounding roads off of that northeast corner. But the, kind of the driving force behind that is an easement that was placed on this property that requires us to have the access, or I mean, the front door, if you will, facing the northeast.
Okay.
Is it a utility easement?
Nope. Nope. It's a, when this was portioned out, carved out of that, of the shopping center, it was one of the, one of the requirements that was placed on the, on that property.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmoki.
I was just gonna follow up on that. Does staff know where that easement came from? Because it, was it the intent to keep it away from the plaza or?
It's an agreement between private parts.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schmoki.
Yeah, just one other question. So, I'm correct that there's really only one main entrance, and then it looks like there's one back?
Yes.
Okay. Is that a sufficient number of like emergency exits?
Oh, yes.
For the size of a building, just?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Heikala.
I'm just kind of wondering, so this building is totally separate from the shopping center? It's not?
It's not attached.
An addition to or won't, isn't now or nor will be?
Right, that's correct.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Crowell, do we need a condition on here, or have we seen the construction of the trash enclosure? We usually have something on the lines of trash enclosure matches the construction of the building, materials?
Yeah. I don't think I added a condition on there, because I thought when I had read through the elevation, that the materials they were using would match the building. I do realize like on the elevations, it doesn't show too much detail on the trash enclosure.
It's hard, it's hard to tell.
Yeah. Yeah. And I don't have the key to the elevations on these images here, but I thought, I recall when I reviewed it, that the materials that they kind of pointed to for the trash enclosure did match the materials of the building. But yeah, I know that the commission has added that as a condition in the past and could definitely be something that the commission could kind of add if they felt that was necessary.
Any other questions then for the petitioner at this time? All right, we may have more for you later, but?
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we do need to have a public hearing, so I will open a public hearing in planning case 22-17, site plan for Sola Salons at 12 XXX Riverdale Boulevard Northwest, Little Fork, Little North Fork, 7 Riverdale LLC. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing?
Chair Schwartz. I did receive an email yesterday from a property owner at Riverdale Village. Couldn't make it to the meeting tonight, but just wanted to share their kind of comments on the project, so I'm just gonna distribute out a copy of an email that Matt and I received.
All right. Do we need to read that into the record or?
We'll note, we'll note if the record retains a copy to make sure that it's reflected.
Thank you. Mr. Crowell, reference to the points that are brought out by this, has staff looked into any of these and what are the staff's thoughts?
Mr. Chair. We're, we've been aware of this particular issue for weeks, uh, and legally speaking, you're to consider the application based upon our standards. Like I said, there's a agreement between two private parties and that, that's for them to figure out. Uh, and obviously this email, which came recently, it's dated, uh, talks about some of the issues that they're gonna have to figure out amongst themselves. But if the, the commission would look, one of the conditions we have is the applicant maintain reciprocal easement agreement to ensure access. As for the use issues, this use is permitted under city code where it's going. As for the agreement between parties, we'll let them address that between themselves.
Thank you. All right, we're still in the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak at this public hearing? Last call for the public hearing. See none. Close the public hearing and limit comments to the commission. Commissioner, your thoughts, concerns?
Mr. Chair.
Opinions? Commissioner Schmucke.
So regarding the parking, really quick, so the ratio of staff or, um, you know, occupants of the individual studios to the number of customers expected at time, do we have any sort of understanding to know if the number of parking spaces is sufficient to support both?
Yeah, I guess from our zoning code kind of perspective, we do have the one stall per three hundred square feet of floor area, um, and so there it would just require at least forty-one spaces and here they're providing seventy-nine spaces, so it's more than what the minimum of our, our code would require. Um, I'm not sure if the petitioner would wanna add if they have more insight around similar projects in the parking, but from the zoning code kind of standpoint in our site plan review, this exceeds what would be required of them.
Sure. Yeah, I recognize that the, the business model is such that the individual tenants kind of drive their own hours, so I would imagine that it's not like they're gonna be fully, um, operable between specified date or, uh, time, so I was just curious if there was a generally known percentage of time where it's gonna be maybe at a hundred percent versus fifty percent, um, in terms of its load. Do we know that information?
I do not know that information. I don't, yeah, I don't know if the potential, uh, petitioner would have any kind of thoughts on those kinds of questions around parking, but I, I don't know.
Basis for my question is, is there sufficient parking? Let's, let's ask that question.
Under our standards, there is.
Thank you.
And wouldn't it be the fact of being in the mall, that there's other mall parking available that technically would be available to customers within the mall?
You should consider this application on its own merits.
Thank you.
I guess the only thing I'll just also add, like, this is in our regional shopping zoning district and in that, um, in our standards and what it kind of describes is that, you know, they do encourage a kind of environment where people can kind of walk to multiple businesses and don't necessarily need to drive to, um, every business in Riverdale Village, and so I think in that spirit, this fits our regional shopping district.
Thank you.
Anything else from the commission?
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a clarifying question on?
Commissioner Schmucke.
Yes, so under the development guidelines, the screening of mechanical equipment, is there an issue with screening? I wasn't quite clear on that.
Yeah, I just put, um, that note in here, cause it does look like there is some mechanical equipment on the ground, um, on this site plan, kinda by parking space number four, and it was just hard to tell for, for me on the site plan whether that was screened or not, and so I just added it as a condition, cause it is in our, um, development guidelines that those should be properly screened.
Okay, and again, kinda going back then, how they screen it, we don't want just anything screening it, so would it be landscape screening? Is it, um, you know, materials? What is, what would that screening be required to be, or again, is it in the guidelines and we don't need to worry about it?
Yeah, it is in our code what those kind of different screening requirements would be. I know that landscaping in, in certain circumstances can count as sufficient screening, um, or again, it would be kind of material similar to the building material.
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And that, yeah, that is in our, our code and it kinda covered in our chapter eleven.
And the, the wording then of the, um, condition just being adequate screened, you feel that that's sufficient direction to the applicant?
I, I believe so. If, um, the commission wants to add just like per our, um, kind of zoning standard, um, I don't think that hurts anything to, to add that, but.
I just wanna make sure the applicant knows what they're responsible for, so that's good.
Yeah.
Okay. And do we remove number six then with regard to the landscaping? Does that drop since?
I, I would think we could.
Okay.
Yes.
So Mr. Crowell, then the other mechanics for the building are on the roof, is that right?
Yeah, there were, if there was additional equipment, it would be on the roof, and then I, I know I have communicated with the applicant on that and that we felt the, the roof parapets that they have, um, would provide sufficient screening for any roof, um, mechanical equipment.
Yeah, okay.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablo.
I have a question for Planner Crowell. Um, I have, it's almost more, less of a question, more of a concern, um, being that it's facing up, uh, uh, up against Highway ten. Uh, historically, uh, from my experience, the, in the past, uh, the planning commission has not been, uh, my concern is perhaps that the landscaping plan be, uh, really considered and taken with extra weight to make sure that there is coverage between, um, that it meets the standards and it, and up against Highway ten, because we've, with certain developments, we've clear cut and totally have, it doesn't, for how many years, certain developments have been up against Highway ten and landscaping was put in, it was miniscule and the trees are still almost the same size, um, in certain examples, and I don't wanna point out certain ones, but, um, if there's going to be landscaping, all I'm saying is that I'd like to see severe effort that some, that actual landscaping and it fulfills its purpose up against Highway ten, because the plan is nice, but I, I'd like to see serious enforcement of that. So, that's my, more of my concern than a question, so.
All right, commission, anything else? Anyone ready for a, a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Schmucke.
Uh, in planning case twenty-two dash seventeen, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed site plan with the following conditions. All engineering comments be addressed, all sustainability comments be considered, um, applicant enter into a site security agreement with the city, the applicant maintain reciprocal easement agreement to ensure access to public street, any ground mechanical equipment be adequately screened. We'll scratch number six, which is the additional landscaping, um, condition, and we'll replace six with all signage is subject to separate sign permits, and number seven then will be applicant pay park dedication fees in the amount of six thousand dollars prior to issuance of any building permit.
I'll second that.
Motion by Schmucke, second by Casey. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, and that motion carries, and this is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within ten business days if someone so chooses. Otherwise, good luck. All right, our next case is planning case twenty-two dash eighteen. A site plan and conditional use permit amendment for River Trail Learning Center at one-seven-zero-zero Coon Rapids Boulevard, Walton and Menk Incorporated. Mr. Crowell.
All right. Um, in our final case tonight, the applicant is requesting a site plan approval and, uh, an amendment to a conditional use permit for a eight thousand one hundred and seventy square foot building addition and some circulation improvements to River Trail's Learning Center at L O Jacob. So here's the site of the school along Coon Rapids Boulevard, it's in our low-density residential two district, of which a public school is a conditional use. The building was constructed in nineteen twenty-one and has undergone a variety of an ex, of expansions, renovations over, over the years. If you'll recall, the planning commission approved a classroom addition and an administrative office addition, um, on November twenty-first, twenty nineteen, and I think through that, um, realizing that the school was a conditional use and that there wasn't a conditional use permit on file, that you also approved a conditional use permit for the school. Um, and those were both part of planning case nineteen dash twenty-one, and those additions were completed in fall of twenty twenty-one, and so the, the aerial files that I have don't currently show the, um, current footprint of the school and that recent addition, and so, kind of in my presentation, I did do a walkthrough and a site visit this week and tried to take some photos of the existing condition that maybe could help if folks are kinda unfamiliar with the existing condition on site. And so kinda with that, this was just a photo that I took standing out there, this is on the southwest corner of the play area that would be on the western side of the site. You'll kind of see here, um, this is the recent, um, addition that was completed in twenty twenty-one, and that there's a hard surface play area that also acts as a fire access road, um, for the school. So just kind of looking out at that paved area and then kind of beyond here, you see the, the playground, um, there's an infiltration basin and a, um, kind of kickball or softball field just beyond the playground. All of those items would be impacted with the site plan, that I'll go into a little bit more detail in a, in a second. So then if you kind of walk across that hard play area that you just saw to the, um, northeast corner, this is again, still looking north towards Coon Rapids Boulevard, um, kind of right at this corner that gets cut out on the photo is where that, um, addition would, would kind of start and, and come out towards, towards me, and so here is just kind of showing that existing, um, fire access road, um, on site in the, in the playground here. And then standing in that corner, I just turned around quick, um, kind of looking south at the site, just to kinda, again, give you an idea of the completed addition and the kind of current hard surface play area. So this was an overall site plan that was provided by the applicant, and I just tried to lay out, um, in this kind of black outline is the current footprint of the school, and this kind of blue, dark bluish area is kind of my estimation of where the twenty twenty-one addition was, and then this light blue that might be a little hard to see on the screen, so I apologize, um, would be the new addition that they're proposing with this application. Um, just north of that, um, addition, you'll see they're proposing for circulation access a turnaround that would become a pickup and drop-off area for, um, buses for the school, and that that existing playground and kind of softball field, kickball field area, um, would be removed and kind of replaced elsewhere on site. So that's kind of a, a little bit of a overview of the site and then looking a little bit more specifically here at their, um, proposed site plan. Um, on the left here is their removals plan, so again, here's just the, kinda that hard-surfaced play area in my first photo, much of that would be removed in place of where the addition would go. Um, in some, uh, again, the, kind of, this is just showing the playground and the, the playfield and the infiltration basin being impacted. So then on the right is the, the site plan, uh, where you would see the fire access lane now shifted to run towards the, the west of the building addition, and then that would, um, intersect into the, the turnaround that they're proposing, um, for access, um, on the site to continue over. And then you'll see, um, kind of the relocated hard play area here and then that they're proposing kind of a soft play area just north to the, the turnaround. This is a slightly more detailed site plan, just again, kind of showing, um, the new layout of the fire access lane, the play area, and this turnaround, you'll see that they do provide sidewalk to the entrance, uh, and that sidewalk goes around the turnaround to connect to the soft play area, um, and then there's some surmountable curb, um, for the fire truck. So the only vehicles that would be accessing this fire lane would be an emergency vehicle, um, at, at the school. There isn't regular kind of buses or any other kind of traffic going through this fire lane. Um, it'd be more buses and, and vehicles in the turnaround to drop off at, at an entrance here on this addition. Um, in many ways, our zoning code is much more for new construction or kind of major redevelopment, and so with a smaller addition like this, um, we kinda took a more general approach to our, um, standards of approval for our site plan and for the conditional use permit. I did just pull some quick dimensional requirements, um, in this case, it is in our River Rapids overlay district, as well, and the school would follow actually our office district requirements, since it's an institutional use in our residential area, and so here again, it meets, um, our building coverage, um, the building height and any setbacks. Um, I did make a note that the, um, the building they had indicated is about seventy-two feet from the property line, um, on Ibis Street to the west of the site. It's, the fire access road is about forty-two feet from the property line, and then the curb and kind of sidewalk area on the turnaround is about forty-four and a half feet from that property line, so that, um, in many ways, kind of far exceeds the, um, thirty feet or twenty feet in a lot of cases that we'd re, uh, would require for building and parking, um, setbacks. Maybe the other piece that I'll just note, um, again, it's in our River Rapids overlay district and this addition impacts less than fifteen percent of the existing development, and so in this case, when there is something that impacts fifteen percent or less of a development, it's up to the discretion of the community development director to, whether or not to bring this through review in the planning commission, and given that the school is a conditional use in the L D R two district, the kind of the, um, impact to some of the circulation on the site with the building getting a little bit closer to Ibis Street, um, staff just determined that a, a site plan review with a public hearing should be provided. This is just a, a landscape plan, and as I noted in, uh, one of the conditions of approval, um, would really just, at a minimum, I would say, at least replace any tree that would be removed as part of this addition and expansion. Again, I think there's a little bit more flexibility and that this addition wouldn't necessarily be held to our full landscaping standards as, um, I think the previous addition and some work at the school, um, was much more involved in the landscaping to meet some of those standards, so with the smaller addition, we would just wanna at least replace any tree that was removed. removed. Here's a floor plan of the proposed addition, just showing some classroom space and some additional support space. We do have the applicant here to help answer any questions as well, kind of about the school and the needs of the students and with this addition. In terms of the elevations, again, not necessarily having to follow all of the kind of details that it would require in this district, given it's a smaller addition to the building. But here they're proposing to match the existing 2021 addition. So it'd be the similar materials of brick and having the different kind of details of the brickwork to match what's existing on the new addition. And the applicant did bring some material samples of that as well. So this is kind of the north and south elevations. This is what you would see like being on the school site. And then this is just the west elevation. So this would be the view that you'd see from Ibis Street. And I just tried to put the whole addition into context of the entire site and kind of looking at that circulation again, how it currently stands, that this kind of northern parking lot is a one-way. So you would enter here on the north end of the site and exit on the east. And then it kind of is another separate driveway that's a two-way parking lot to get to this kind of southern, southeast end of the site. So it's kind of a little bit of a different circulation. And then the fire access is a kind of one-way access behind the engine site. And so overall, the overall site circulation doesn't change a whole lot. They're not really touching the parking lots in front of the building. And the only difference would be now when you enter on this north end site, you could either enter the parking lot or kind of turn right and get into the kind of turnaround, pickup, drop off area here and come back out. And then I just have some more photos from my visit of the site. So here's just a picture of the playground that would be relocated and impacted and that kind of existing kickball softball field. I'm not quite sure what activity happens on that field. And here's just, again, some more pictures of the 2021 addition, I think to just help envision what their new addition would be, again, kind of matching the same materials, kind of similar brickwork and kind of different brick patterns and windows would match what you see here. And then here's just some views up from Ibis Street, kind of looking down at the site. So I guess in this kind of right-hand photo, if you can try to imagine, the addition would start at that corner and it's kind of just blocked by this tree and come down and be out here. You'd still have some hard play area here and the fire access lane kind of wrapped around here, kind of the turnaround entry, pickup and drop off. So I think with that, we overall felt, again, that this proposal met our design standard, or not our design standards, but our standards of approval for a site plan and that it met our standards of approval for the conditional use permit. So we're recommending approval based on these conditions, that engineering comments be addressed, sustainability comments be considered. The applicant may need to enter into a revised lease agreement if necessary with the city and that any tree removed with the addition be replaced elsewhere on site. And that the commission would also approve the conditional, the amendment to the conditional use permit for this addition. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And the applicant again is also here to help answer any questions.
Mr. Kroll, has the fire department looked at this and are they satisfied with the fire access around the backside of the building?
Yes, they are. And that 20-foot drive, I think, is even slightly wider than what would be required for kind of a one-way access. They did provide turning templates as well. I can't recall if that was in the packet that you received, but the turning templates looked okay and our city engineer felt that they were okay as well with the, kind of their exiting off into that turnaround and buses through the turnaround all looked okay.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Kroll?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Navlott.
I have a question for Mr. Kroll. I know from my recollection from last year's addition, and now there's an addition to the addition, and the drop off is being added or is it, I'm trying to understand, is it being added or changed? Because I thought that was part of last year and the year before addition.
Yeah, I'm not recalling off the top of my head. I think that'll be a question for the applicant, whether this is a new entrance or if it's just slightly revised.
Okay, that's the first one. The second question I have is, is there a plan or has there been a traffic analysis of traffic flow? If there's going to be increased student, I voiced this last year with the increase in the community about the amount of traffic and the buses in this area with the changes from last year. Now, if there's going to be an extra 8,004 classrooms and extra drop off space added, is that not going, does that not, does that not warrant a traffic analysis and the impact on the community?
Yeah, I think the applicant would also be able to speak to this, but my understanding with meeting with Mike a little bit is that I don't think it actually is adding students more. These classroom additions would allow kind of the student-to-teacher ratio go down. And so I don't know the exact numbers if there's additional enrollment, but my understanding was to help this reduce the kind of teacher-to-student ratio. And then maybe just the other piece I'll mention around some of the site access. I know we worked with the applicant on some different ideas and proposals on how to kind of look at kind of site access here. You know, I think one of their proposals, they were asking about adding a driveway onto Ibis Street and we strongly discouraged that to try to maintain circulation on site. And so we felt this kind of turnaround that they're currently proposing provided enough kind of pedestrian access with the sidewalk to the main entrance and sidewalk to the play area and that there's enough area for buses and cars to do pickup and drop off on site and not create additional traffic on Coon Rapids Service Road.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Kroll?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Casey.
So, Mr. Kroll, is this circular turnaround that's new, is that around the infiltration pot or how does that impact that?
Yeah, I believe in the narrative to the application, there were going to be some impacts in having to shift the infiltration basin a little bit and that the idea would be the infiltration basin would essentially be the kind of center kind of grass area and that the turnaround is going around the infiltration basin. And I know our city engineer had also provided comments kind of around that impact and making sure they're providing the right documentation and following those steps with the impact to the infiltration basin.
And then is that a one-way circulation around there?
It would be, yep, yeah. So vehicles would kind of, yeah, it's one-way access around, yep.
Okay, and then on the same graphic you have up, you're still going to maintain that northern entrance, east exit, and then the two-way in and out on that east side, that's going to be maintained for, to go to the south part of the site?
Yeah, that's correct. And then there, that kind of, that two-way entrance there is really just for the parking lot. And then there is an existing gate on site here to ensure that vehicle traffic isn't like going behind the school and that play area, that it really is just for fire, emergency vehicle access, yep.
I think that was all I had questioned. Thank you.
And Commissioner, any other questions for Mr. Kroll?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
Does the existing play area remain as is, the same size, et cetera, et cetera?
I don't know if the application went into that much detail and it was more that it would be kind of relocated elsewhere on site. So that might be a question for the applicant. They might have more details on the new playground and the size.
Anything else for Mr. Kroll? All right, the petitioner would like to make a presentation or add anything? Please give your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'm Mike Kraft, 1442 98th Lane, Northwest Coon Rapids. I am the architect and with me tonight is Ben Martenson, who is the Director of Buildings and Grounds for NOK Hannipin Schools. We make ourselves available to any questions and with regard to the questions that have come up so far, I'd be happy to address some of those. In terms of additional students and additional buses on the property, this property, the student population dropped on this property several years ago and the use within these new classrooms is something like half a dozen students per room, some far lower, some a little bit more. So the number of vehicles onto the property would not be significantly increased by this project. And again, with regard to the playground areas, by creating this turnaround for the vehicles to come through, we've allowed a lot, all of that paving south and west of the existing structure now to be freed up and more accessible for playgrounds. So whereas we are compromising one of the two ball fields, that's where that drive comes in, we're able to gain some additional space to the south. It's not going to increase dramatically, but we'll be able to move the equipment to that area for use for the students.
You still will have the same amount of equipment?
Same amount of equipment, that's right. And those of you who may be familiar with that, those ball fields, they're, I don't want to say never used, but they're almost never used. The school uses one of the fields sometimes for a few kids just to get out and get some air. And so for them, being able to compromise one of them is going to work out just fine. They're not publicly used or organized games or anything.
And that tennis court that's there is not part of the school property?
It is part of the school property, but it's not part of the school curriculum. So there, it, and those tennis courts get used a little.
But not by the community, but by the student?
No, they get used occasionally by the community. I actually lived two blocks from there and when my kids were young, we would, we would use them, but it's not part of the school's curriculum.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
Mr. Kraft, I think we all remember when we did the last addition, there was, we lost a lot of trees on the site and I think we replaced at a one, for every two we lost, we got one back. With the removal of the ball field here, that kind of seems to open up that northern, western part of the property for a couple more trees. I mean, I know we're asking for one-for-one here, but is there, is there any opportunity to add a little bit more back to the site, especially around kind of the end of Aviset along Coon Rapids Boulevard Service Road there?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. And I don't know if you have that landscape plan here. It's true, Mr. Kroll says about requiring a one-to-one replacement, but we actually are going in with this landscape plan and replacing many more than that. Because as the plan developed two years ago and we went through the Coon Creek Watershed District, those obligations for additional infiltration basin required more trees to come out than we wanted to. Of course, it was, we think it was, it was part of the approvals here, but seeing it, it was more than, more than anybody really wanted. And staff was good during this process to say, can you guys come back and make up for some of what was lost two years ago? And frankly, because of our relationship with Ibis Street and the homes along that street, it makes a lot of sense for us to do that now. And so in the plans that Bolton and Mink put together, it is more than the required one-to-one. It's, I don't know if it's two-to-one, but it's significantly more than what was required under the zoning.
Okay.
So excellent point.
Thank you.
Any questions for the petitioner? All right, we may have more for you. All right, at this time, I need to open a public hearing. Open public hearing in planning case 22-18, a site plan and conditional use permit amendment for River Trail Learning Center at 1700 Coon Rapids Boulevard. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Limit comments to the commission. Commissioner, your thoughts, concerns, opinions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Kroll, just a little bit of, can you go a little bit deeper? Is the goal just to maintain circulation on the site to not have a connection to Ibis? I mean, getting, getting in and out of this site is a challenge. There's a lot of twisty roads there, I mean, you know, and with the increased traffic with Caribou, that creates quite a bit more over there. You know, I can understand the staff desire to keep it on site, but I mean, at what point are we going to look at this to say, especially to that southerly parking lot? Does it start to make sense to maybe pull traffic away from the busy stop sign by the Boulevard, away from the busy business that's also by a larger, more busier road? I mean, I'm kind of struggling to understand why we're not looking at this a little bit bigger?
Sure, yeah, I guess kind of in some of our initial talks on this addition and working with Mike, you know, we definitely shared that we kind of wanted to see maybe overall kind of circulation improvements. In some ways, it kind of felt a little bit piecemeal with some of these additions. I know from what I kind of read through the case file predated me, the last addition, that there were some improvements or paving of the parking lot. I, you know, I guess I'll say, I know they have signage for the afternoon, so if you're exiting out of this north parking lot, you're supposed to turn left. And if you're exiting out of this south parking lot, you're supposed to turn right in some ways to hopefully help, since those driveways are so close, to help kind of break up the traffic a little bit with some people going north and some kind of going south. But yeah, I guess we just kind of felt this was out of discussions that we had and the proposals they brought forward. I don't know if, Matt, you have kind of additional thoughts from some of those conversations?
That's, that's a, that's a good summary. Yeah, we did raise the issue with the applicant and acknowledge that, you know, the circulation here was never really master planned and certainly there are a lot of driveways in and out. And that was part of our rationale for avoiding an additional driveway on Ibis Street, that it adds, you know, a fourth or so street access. Ultimately, we, you know, we were comfortable with what was proposed and felt it's generally proportional to the size of the addition. Again, we're looking at less than a 15% addition to the school and they are making some changes. It didn't really warrant tying wholesale changes to the site circulation to that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I also agree with what Commissioner Geisler said. I drove through there today and went through the parking lot there and it was pretty much empty, but I was looking to see if anybody was around because I'm not sure if I made a correct turn through there. And so it is, I think that is a valid thing that should be considered.
And we have anyone ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Casey.
Oh, in planning case 22-17, I move that we approve the proposed site plan with the following conditions, that all engineering comments be addressed, all sustainability comments be addressed, the applicant enter into a revised lease agreement if necessary with the The applicant enter into a revised lease agreement if necessary with the city. And the fourth, any tree removal, removed with the addition be replaced elsewhere on site. And do I add this? Do it separate?
I would say two separate motions.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Casey, second by Schmoki. Any further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Nay.
And the motion carries with Commissioner Navlak opposed. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 business days if someone so chooses. And now for the conditional use permit?
Yeah, um, I will add a motion, I would move that we approve the conditional use permit for an elementary school based on the following finding. That the proposed conditional use permit is in compliance with conditional use permit standards from chapter 11-304.3.
I'll second, I'm sorry. Second.
And motion by Casey, second by Schmoki. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. And the, abort decisions by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 business days if someone so chooses. Thank you and good luck. And moving on to other business. Mr. Croll, you have anything for other business?
Um, yeah, we won't have any formal site plan reviews for our September meeting, but we do plan to bring the Mississippi River Critical Corridor Area Ordinance um, for Planning Commission, kind of review and approval and moving that through the process to adopt. Um, so that's kind of what's on our agenda for September.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner, anyone have anything for other business?
I would move to adjourn.
Motion by Casey.
I'll second.
Second by Schmoki, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please adjourn.